We're calling it a session, a hearing for public safety for Tuesday, March 29, 2022, 1:00 PM, caucus room 229. Anyway, the link on this status page is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:00 PM, March 31, in room 229, and the public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. For testifiers participating remotely, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it's your turn to testify. Each testifier will have a maximum of two minutes. I'll be adding a list of, I'll be reading a list of individuals who submitted written testimony for each measure. We apologize if the closed captioning doesn't accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the legislature's website, and then you'll find the list of the, what's the, this list of the measure. So, beginning with, and we have 11 resolutions, so just to keep that in mind. The first one is SCR 49, SR 44, which urges the city and county of Honolulu to establish a police station in Lewa, Oahu to provide enhanced police services and improved law enforcement response, response for Lewa, Oahu communities. And I think I just lost the power by mic. Yep. Anyway, we're back in order again. Here we go. The first testifier is, well, I take it back. There are no in-person testifiers or on Zoom. But I'll, I'll just read the names anyway. If any, well, before we start, are there anybody here in the room or on Zoom that would like to testify at this measure? Nope? Okay. So these are the people who always are sending letters of support. Robert Cavaco, Chopo, Francis Tabiz Adrian, Chanel Love Grove, Ellen Fossberg, Michael Rice, and Chanel Love Grove. They all send in letters of support. There were six in support, no opposition, no comments. Next measure is SCR 44. SR 44. And again, you know, this is two letters of support from Richard Adams and Kurt Otto Wazinski. But again, not video or in-person testimony. So moving on to SCR 88. Robert Cavaco sent support, Richard Adams sent support. And members, any questions? Otherwise, SR 78, there was a Michael Rice who sent a letter in support. Now we move to SCR 85. And we have Larry Varey. Are you there, Larry?
Yes, Senator Ishihara, Larry Varey here.
Why don't you go ahead?
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Nishihara and Vice Chair Decoit. Thank you for allowing me to provide testimony on this very important bill. I'm chair for the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, but I'm providing this as an individual. This resolution is so important to bring the community and the military together at levels with participation from the neighborhood board representatives and from selective representatives from each of the military services and their base locations to share perspectives on the environment, emergency planning, hiring policies, housing, mutual opportunities to help each other in keeping Hawaii safe, beautiful, clean. The Pearl City Neighborhood Board already has a great relationship with Joint Base Pearl Harbor, Hickam Protocol Office, and the Naval Facility staff. As a former Navy Command Master Chief years back, I can tell you that we did have some events with, between the military and the civilian community. The Honolulu J.C.'s personally came to me one day and asked me if I could bring military volunteers. They helped them support the Honolulu J.C.'s state fair, a one-day special for the handicapped, handicapped and disabled children. It was a huge success, and for years after, it continued on. Other examples are for the military. But if this initiative is approved by the governor, it would definitely bring the military, state, and neighborhood boards together. The Pearl City Neighborhood Board has already experienced a great relationship through these, through the cleanups, the Pearl Harbor Bike Trail, the home cleanup by homeless encampments of the Pearl City Peninsula, and grooming Sunset Memorial Park Cemetery. Having quarterly meetings would allow more opportunity to coordinate mutual resources to improve the environment, improving recreational opportunities in Pearl Harbor area, and be ready to assist in emergencies and flooding. There are numerous military members that would like to work with the community, but they just require opportunities and coordination. I most strongly believe that this Citizen Advisory Council on Federal Affairs will definitely bring the community together with the military for Schofield Barracks, Camp Smith, County Marine Corps Base, Hickam, and Pearl Harbor areas. And mahalo, New Iowah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it was the only testimony. Next, we have SCR 157. And we have the Kurt Otogoro who sent in comments. Yeah, there weren't any testifiers on Zoom or in person. But if there's anybody out there on Zoom would like to testify, please do so now. Otherwise, I'll just read off that. Miley David sent support, Robert Cavaco sent support, Christopher Garske sent in support, Sylvia Dolena in support, and Paul Montague in support, as well as Sean Loai in support, and those were the others. There were no opposition. On SR 150, again, no Zoom presentation or in person. Anyone here in the audience might be interested in testifying for this? If not, I'll just read off that. There were one comment from the Kurt Otogoro, and the others were just support, and there were David, Miley David, Christopher Garske, Sylvia Dolena, and Paul Montague, and Sean Loai. They were all in support. Moving on to SCR 196. We have Kurt Cottrell who is on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kurt Cottrell, Administrator for Division of State Parks, and we stand on our written testimony in support of this resolution. Mahalo.
Thank you. And we have James Nelson in person. Hey, James.
Good afternoon, Chair Nishihara, Senators. I just wanted to clarify that I think, as you know, I work in the Senate, and this measure began with the constituents' correspondence to the office where I work, who had a very unfortunate incident. And I ended up doing some research, and I also assisted with the drafting. But I just wanted to clarify that my testimony is based on my experience and that I, based on my own experience, had several interesting interactions with various enforcement agencies, which kind of furthered my interest in the topic. So thank you for hearing the resolution, and I'm in strong support. And if you have any questions about the experience that I had, I'd be happy to answer. So thank you very much.
Yeah. What's about you attacked by a dog? You were attacked by a dog?
Yes. In a state park.
Yeah.
Where animals were prohibited. HPD responded. Everybody's pointing fingers at everybody else on both legs. So it was, it took a couple of months to recover. I'm lucky, I'm retired, so I could spend two months with my legs up. But it was just so unnecessary that I had to contact all of these agencies to try to get any kind of resolution.
I'm glad that you recovered.
Well, thank you very much.
So there were, I'm sorry, Chair, if I just.
Yeah, go ahead. So one dog or several dogs attacked you?
The lady had two dogs, only one of which attacked me on both legs, so.
And she could not get them off you, and they're clamped on?
I was screaming at the lady, and then the lady started screaming at me, and I guess she went, I'm a little bit blurry, but she restrained the dog, and then I called 911 as I was walking back to my car. And I called for an ambulance, but the police came first, and then an ambulance came after that, and then I had to go to the emergency room to get x-rayed.
She was in the park with the dogs off the, off the.
Correct. And it's a park where animals are actually prohibited. I mean, that's another part of the big problem is that most people don't know it, but most city parks and most state parks, right after alcohol, animals are prohibited. So, but that being said, if people aren't going to bring animals, they should at least have them leashed. I think that's the important thing. So when I was working with the constituent, it was kind of like, well, there really should be, I put it in my testimony, something like a clicker ticket sort of thing for unleashed dogs that would make people more aware of it. Because it's a question, it's a problem for animals too, the people that take their own pet animal, thousands of some of these animals killed by unleashed dogs. So, but yeah, it's, it's a rough go, and they can't, they don't do stitches for dog bites because of the bacterial problems. They want it to ooze back out. So it takes a really, really long time to heal, especially if it's on the front of your leg, because there's nothing there, so.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, this is a comment. Let me read the title of the bill in case people are not quite clear. Says urging the counties to more effectively and meaningfully coordinate their police enforcement and public awareness efforts with the state and humane societies and other animal welfare organizations concerning the dangers posed by unleashed dogs to humans and other animals in the public areas. And so recall, there already is a law that says, because we have the dogs that are considered dangerous animals or dangerous dogs. Yeah. You want to respond to that?
In general, dangerous dog laws are county laws.
Right.
Generally speaking, animal cruelty is a matter of state law and animal control is a matter of county law. And I know on Maui, the Maui County Code is actually, from my reading, a little bit better than the city and county ordinances about dealing with it. But as a, as a criminal matter, it becomes a misdemeanor. The leashing laws are also county laws. So the only problem is when you get, it's Mr. Cottrell knows from, you know, DLNR stands for state parks, which are officially DLNR. So HPD here, for example, will kind of tell you, oh, well, this is a state park, and, you know, we can't enforce their animal prohibitions. And, and then you can't get the Humane Society to impound or destroy a dog without a court order, so that, you know, goes back to whether how far the HPD and the prosecutors are going to follow through. In my case, there is a court case now, but she shouldn't, she didn't show up for the arraignment and plea, so now she's got a bench warrant put on her. You know, it's just going to kind of probably, so I have no idea whether the dog is still up there or not, which is kind of, from the public safety standpoint, you know, really kind of sad. So there's a lot, it's, there's a lot to be done in terms of follow-up, but if you can just get more dogs and more leashes, I think that should be a good step, and I think that's what's the situation.
Sure, go ahead.
Are, are you aware, do most of the counties have leash laws?
Yes.
They all have?
Yeah, I mean, I look, I mean, it was a few months ago when I was researching this, but I did go county by county, and they were fairly clear on both their leash laws, which is kind of like an administrative thing, and I don't even think it's an actual, because it's not criminal, it's just fine. And, yeah, the leash laws are under county, it may be administrative in some, and we actually code in others. And then the dangerous dog thing is what they choose to do. State law only has this kind of civil remedy.
Right.
So if it's going to be a criminal thing, then it's under, on Oahu, it's in the city and county ordinances, and in the Maui County Code as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Sorry for your experience. That's terrible. We think of dogs as puppies and nice and companionage, and they're not all that way.
It was just for, just for the public's acknowledgement, yes. On the committee, we have Senator Baker, and we have Senators Vela and Revere. Thank you. Anyway, the next SCR is SCR 7. Oh, 169.
189.
Oh, 189. Don't get added on.
Senator, he skips one with the latest one for 196.
What, the SR?
SCR 196, there was one more after.
I did do 196.
Yeah, but apparently there was one more testifier.
Oh, there was one more testifier?
Yeah. So we want to get everybody on the.
Oh, yeah. Well, let me get that.
So these, oh, and then Gerard Silva for. Yeah. And then it gives you, because for the next one, SCR 7, the topics here, so he's got a twenty-two letters.
Okay. They're reminded that, although people are not going to be present to testify. We had Betty Teleport in support, and Gerard Silva in opposition. And that's brings us up to SCR 7. SCR 7 is requesting the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency to develop a preliminary draft evacuation plan for the areas within lava zones 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. And on that, we have. Okay, we have Luke Myers on Zoom. Luke?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. This is David Lopez, the Executive Officer of Haime on behalf of the Administrator Luke Myers. Now, Haime stands on its written testimony, and we had submitted a report on this, and we're available for any questions. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. And Ashley Kurtowitz, also on Zoom.
Senator Ashley is not.
Which, Ashley's not there. Anyway, she sent one in support. And the others are in support is Miley David, Oleka Goro Inaba in support, and Rebecca Villagas in support. And SR 2 is just the repeat of SCR, right? For that one, so.
Companion.
Yeah, the companion, so, sorry, we've gone over the list of people, so.
That's a good question. Haime?
Oh, you want a question to Haime? Okay, go ahead. Question to.
For Haime, please? If he's still there?
Luke, are you still there?
Yes, still here. Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Your folks' testimony was if past the time and effort used to respond to this measure could negatively impact emergency management efforts and response. How much time would be required, or could you elaborate a little bit on that?
We, there currently isn't evacuation plans per se at the state level for that. It's, it's basically handled at the county level. We don't have, and we have lost manpower over the, over COVID, so we don't have full staffing yet. We're in the middle of revamping our emergency.
Is Hawaii County Emergency Management?
Plans to a comprehensive.
I'm sorry, there's something cut out there, but the, the County Emergency Planning Agency, do they have plans that do a similar, similar work here?
That's where the, it should originate at, sir, yes. They should do that. All emergencies under the National Incident Management System originate or start and end in the county, so we would be offering a support solution to help them develop that.
Okay, thank you.
And so for us to devote the manpower to do that would take away from the normal duties that we're currently doing with the COVID and our ongoing disaster work.
But you could reasonably be supportive if they were to take the lead in that analysis?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us up to SCR 18, and we have Larry Varey.
Yes, Senator Nishihara, my apology. Earlier, when the meeting started, I didn't have to attend, and I thought you called for S, for SCR 18, and that's the one that I verbalized accidentally for SCR 85, and nobody corrected me. But I'll stand on my testimony, you all have it, and I won't repeat myself.
Thank you.
Thank you, and my apology.
Okay, we have Shameen Duran in support, and Shonda Dos Reyes in support. And that brings us up.
You want to just say what the resolution is?
The resolution requests that the governor create a Citizen Advisory Council on Federal Affairs. That's what the resolution says. Okay. That brings us up to SCR 37, expressing support for the naming of a United States Navy surface combatant ship after fireman second class and Congressional Medal of Honor recipient, Telesforo Telesforo Trinidad. And on that one, we have no Zoom or in-person testifiers, but there was a total of eight minutes in there.
The end of this, there's two.
But they were, yeah, they were at the very end. Oh, it worked. Okay, I take it back. On Zoom, we have Cecilia Gerlan.
Good afternoon, Chairman Nishihara and members of the Committee on Public Safety, Intergovernmental and Military Affairs. I want to thank all of you for considering and supporting this resolution to name the first Navy combatant ship after Telesforo Trinidad, who received the Medal of Honor in 1915 for his heroic actions onboard USS San Diego. I also want to thank its sponsors, State Senator Kurt Vela, State Representative Bob McDermott, and so many others for doing this. And as you know, this will be the first time that a ship will be named after a Filipino. And generations of Filipinos have served faithfully and loyally in the U.S. Armed Forces since 1901, when President McKinley signed an executive order to create the Insular Force. And actually, Filipinos represent the largest number of foreign-born recruits for so long in the Navy, and even after its independence in 1946, about 35,000 Filipinos from the Philippines were recruited under the Philippine enlistment program. And so the naming of this ship will recognize the shared history and values of two allies which have been forged in war and peace. And it will resonate strongly not only to several generations of Filipino-Americans who have served in the U.S. Navy since 1901, but also to more than 4 million Filipino-Americans here in the United States who are looking for validation of the seminal contributions of Filipinos to the U.S. history. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the state of Hawaii for always spearheading state and national legislation supporting the Filipino veterans. It is always Hawaii who has spearheaded this support for Filipino World War II veterans, from Senator Inouye to Senator Maisie Hirono. So I want to thank you, sir, and all the members of the Hawaii Legislature for supporting this initiative to name the first U.S. Navy combatant ship after Telesforo Trinidad. And as you can see from the letters of support, we have support national from the VFW, American Legion, from flag officers like Admiral Tom Fargo, and the members of the House Armed Services Committee and House Appropriations Committee. And I know that all of the congressional representatives from Hawaii and both senators have also supported this, so thank you. Mahalo to the state of Hawaii.
Thank you. And I think we have another person that's on Zoom.
Renee Trinidad, sir.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to express, on behalf of my family, thank you for supporting and giving this initiative backing that we need to hopefully finally put this to rest. This has been a long-term thing. Actually, my father, who passed away last year, had always been, after trying to get more recognition for my grandfather's heroics that day. Growing up as a kid, he actually died when I was 13 years old. I was growing up in the Philippines and unaware of how big of a thing that he did. And we weren't aware of what the Medal of Honor was all about until I migrated here in the States in 1982, and I found out exactly the greatness of the feat that he did. I think, well, I was approached a couple of years ago by this group headed by Cecilia, along with a couple of veterans from the Armed Forces that they wanted to do this, and the timing actually came very unusually, because my father had just passed away when that happened, and it was a longtime wish of my father that something like this would be done. And I want to thank you on behalf of my family, all the support and love that we've gotten for my grandfather.
Mr. Trinidad, I hope that, that Congress will act on it. And congratulations also for the efforts of your father, what he did to receive the.
Well, what's this, yeah, I was made to understand that this was going to be a long process anyway, and that we're just in the beginnings of it. And who knows? Things, stranger things that happened, and the timing of everything seemed to have just come together at this point in time when stuff happening to Asians in our country have brought things to light, and I think something like this might possibly have a positive effect on that as well.
Just to let you know that letters of support came from Mike Thompson, a congressman, Just let you know that letters of support came from Mike Thompson, a congressman, Joe Courtney, also another congressman, and Julie Earth, Senator Diane Feinstein. Senator and Maisie Hirono are Maisie Hirono, Senator Hirono, and members of Congress and senators and representatives. There's a bunch of letters from them. And Paulus Del Toro, the Secretary of the Navy, also ten letters of support, as well as Thomas Harper, Acting Secretary for the Navy. And going on, it was several mayors, Robert McConnell, Ron Nierenberg, Todd Gloria. And we also have a number of other officers that sent in letters of support. So members, any question?
Oh, yeah. I just, on behalf of all of us. You know, when I got this sent to me and I got to read about him and it's unbelievable back then, yeah, even back then, of what the Filipino community went through. Like you said, you're growing up, you never know nothing until you came to nineteen eighty-two. You know, this is something special, like Senator Nishihara said. Your family is on the right track, and we continue to pray that this happens because you have a whole lot of support. He didn't get to read on. You get hundreds and hundreds of everybody from Congress to all over is highly supporting this. So like you said, this is the right time and the right place. And our love and our support to you and your family, and thank your family for the sacrifices that you guys had did for your grandfather and so forth. But thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you as well. And like I said, it's, my father passed away last year, and I'm sure he'd be smiling in heaven when this actually happens. And with all the support that we've gotten, I think it just might be the right time. And I want to thank you again for your time and your efforts in helping us.
And I, thank you. Thank you, Senator. I speak for members of the committee that we all certainly commend your father's efforts. And we certainly will support getting the name put up on a ship. And I think those of the rest of us in the Senate would probably also back that support. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now to S C R one seventy-four. Supporting the County of Hawaii's efforts to pursue United States Army Corps of Engineers, continuing authorities program funding for the restoration of Kahului Bay in Hawaii Island. And we have on that measure. We have a letter of support from Senator in case, and I think.
Senator Dallas, that's for S R thirty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Okay. Yeah. Oleka Goro Inaba sending a letter of support. And Cynthia Pulehaule Kennedy also sent one in support. And they were, I guess that's all we received. So anyway. That brings up to S R one sixty-seven. S R one sixty-seven.
That's the companion.
Oh, that's companion. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Okay, S C R two hundred, which is requesting the Secretary of the Army to convey Dillingham Airfield to the state of Hawaii. And I know we have Senator Deere here that has been working hard on that. We have Ben Divine in person. Ben, you're here. With support.
I think to start out by thanking Chair Nishihara.
Pull the microphone over just a little closer to you.
Thank you.
Because he's taking through that.
Yeah, definitely muffles. I'd like to start out by thanking Chair Nishihara and the senators for giving me an opportunity to testify about this. I stand by my written testimony as it's been submitted. I'm here speaking on behalf of Save Dillingham Airfield, representing wide breadth of the community that is in support of this resolution. Just as a small addition to the written testimony I've submitted, I'd like to mention that, you know, in nineteen ninety-one, Congress asked this land to be transferred to the state of Hawaii. In nineteen ninety-five, they surveyed the land. And so it's been twenty-six years that there has not been much significant movement. I know that it's a complicated issue, but just to give some comparison, in nineteen ninety-nine, land was turned over from the Naval Air Station at Barbers Point, and they built a whole airport. And all of that has gotten accomplished in the time that it has, that this particular issue has stood by the wayside. The last thing I'll add is just a small personal thing. My mom is out here visiting. The one thing she wanted to do was visit the palace while she was out here, and so we did that this morning. It's inspiring to hear about Queen Lily Luklani and all she did for the community. And there's a great deal of sorrow when you start to get into the part in hearing about how much she lost. And so this is a very tangible step to returning land to the citizens of Hawaii. And nationwide, we have a pilot shortage right now. We can't get enough pilots anywhere. The land specifically that we're talking about houses the Civil Air Patrol and the Little Eagles Club. It is the only place for youth in Hawaii to get free entry into careers in aviation. So this really would help return vital resources to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Question? Nope.
Said it very well.
Oh, okay. I know Senator Rivera has been working on this for a while. I'm surprised he doesn't put himself to give some testimony.
We're all very familiar with his position.
A big habit.
You don't know if you haven't been in Hawaii.
It's certainly steadfast. So. Okay, that brings us up to S C R. Yeah, I guess I should read off the testimony. We had for that we had and read off those who sent in testimony. John Pinion, Allison Marsh, Ryan Divitt, Arvel Shu, Andrew Omeron, Brian Basher, Jennifer Pfizer, Larry Weiss, Vicki McManus, Kim Pace, Bateman, Kira Divitt, Jeremy Delia, Gregory McManus, George Barrer, Todd Yusutake, and Mahila Lani Cypher. They're all in support. And likewise for S R one ninety-three, they were the same names, so I won't be going over those. That brings us to our final measure, which is S C R one sixty-three. Requesting the Department of Accounting and General Services to fund the establishment of one full-time equipment program director position, one full-time staff member position, and cost necessary to establish a full-time state building code council office. And although we don't have any people on Zoom or in person, we had comments from Kurt Odegoro and Stanford Carr to send in support. And the ever-present Gerald Silva in opposition. So that brings us pretty much to the end of this for testifiers. And so if we're ready, I think we can move on to deliberate these. Okay, you want to re. Thank you. Okay, on S C R forty-nine, S R forty-four, pass it as is. S C R eighty-eight.
Wait, wait, let's take a vote before you go down to the rest of them.
I will hit myself. But we got to go back in.
We are, we.
Yeah.
We're in, I think.
We got to pull it back in.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So just, just get us back in for certain.
There we go. Now we can take the vote.
Okay.
Okay, here we go.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass S C R forty-nine and S R forty-four. Chair.
Aye.
Vice Chair is excused. Baker goes aye. Senator Riviere.
Aye.
Senator Fivella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. S C R eighty-eight and S R seventy-eight, there's some tangible amendments that need to be in this. Title should be urging the Honolulu Police Department to allocate additional resources to increase police presence on the Wai'ne'i Coast and the greater New Orleans District. So with that amendment, Chair goes aye.
Senator Decoy is excused. Baker votes aye. Senator Riviere.
Aye.
Senator Fivella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. For S C R eighty-five, requesting the Honolulu Police Department to utilize geographic information system mapping to establish a comprehensive and detailed map of complaints and incidents on Oahu related to illegal fireworks. Is the passive as is.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass S C R eighty-five.
Chair goes aye.
Noting the excused absence of Senator Decoy. Anybody else in the room voting with reservations or no votes? Recommendation will be adopted, Chair.
Thank you. S C R one fifty-seven, S R one fifty, requesting the Honolulu Police Department to prioritize and increase police presence in Ocean View and collaborate with the Department of Accounting and General Services to conduct a feasibility study on locating a police substation in Hawaiian Ocean View Estates. The passive as is, and Chair goes aye.
Chair votes aye, noting the excused absence of Senator Decoy. Any other members present voting reservations or no votes? Casting an aye vote for everybody present. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. S C R one ninety-six, S R one eighty-nine, urging counties to more effectively and meaningfully coordinate the police enforcement and public awareness efforts with the state and human societies and other animal welfare organizations concerning the dangers posed by unleashed dogs, the humans, and to other animals in public places. Passive as is. Chair goes aye.
Chair goes aye. Of the other members present, any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
And noting the excused absence of Senator Decoy.
Right. Thank you. S C R seven, S R two. Requesting the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency to develop a preliminary draft evacuation plan for the areas within lava zone. One, two, three, four, and six. And we intend to pass it as is. Chair goes aye.
Noting the excused absence of Senator Decoy. Any of the other members voting with reservations or no votes? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And S C R eighteen, S R twelve, requesting that the governor create a citizen advisory council on federal affairs is to recommendation passive as is. And Chair goes aye.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Of the other members present, any reservations or no votes? Noting the excused absence of Senator Decoy. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. S C R thirty-seven, S R thirty-two. Expressing support for naming of a United States Navy surface combatant ship after fireman second class and Congressional Medal of Honor recipient, Telesforo Trinidad. Passive with this technical amendments for clarity and consistency. So the best with amendment, Chair goes aye.
Chair votes aye, noting the excused absence of Senator Decoy. Of the other three members present, any reservations or no votes? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. S C R one seventy-four, S R one sixty-seven. Supporting the County of Hawaii's efforts to pursue United States Army Corps of Engineers, continuing authorities program funding for the restoration of Kahului Bay in Hawaii Island. Passive as is. Chair goes aye.
Chair goes aye, noting the excused absence of Senator Decoy. Of the other three members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. S C R two hundred, S R one ninety-three, requesting the Secretary of the Army to convey Dillingham Airfield to the state of Hawaii. There were technical amendments needed for clarity and consistency. The title should be amended to be requesting the chairperson of the Board of Land and Natural Resources to work with the Secretary of the Army. And there's also conforming amendments to the first be and resolve clause to match the new title. So pass with amendments. Chair goes aye.
With noting the excused absence of Senator Decoy. Of the other three members present, any reservations or no votes? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And the last one measure is S C R one sixty-three, S R one fifty-five, requesting the Department of Accounting and General Services to fund the establishment of one full-time equipment program director positions, one full-time staff member position, and cost necessary to establish a full-time state building code council office. And passive as is. Chair goes aye.
Chair goes aye. Recommendation pass unamended, noting the excused absence of Senator Decoy. Of the other members present, any reservations or no votes? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the hearing.